Good evening. I would like to call our regular city council meeting back to order at 7:00 PM. At this time, I would like to ask Melanie LaChelle from the Spiritual Assembly of the Bahais of Laguna Niguel to come forward for the invocation. And then we will have Girl Scout Brownie Troop 5481 come forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh thou kind Lord, this gathering is turning to thee. These hearts are radiant with thy love. These minds and spirits are exhilarated by the message of thy glad tidings. Oh God, let this American democracy become glorious in spiritual degrees even as it has aspired to material degrees. And render this just government victorious. Confirm this revered nation to upraise the standard of the oneness of humanity, to promulgate the most great peace, to become thereby most glorious and praiseworthy among all the nations of the world. Oh God, this American nation is worthy of thy favors and is deserving of thy mercy. Make it precious and near to thee through thy bounty and bestowal.
Attention, color guard advance. Color guard, present the colors. With the Honorable Mayor and Council members and audience, please join in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Audience may be seated.
Okay, girls, stay right there and we're coming down. Hey, weren't they fantastic?[644.12][644.12](APPLAUSE) Yay, you girls did so good. Thank you so much. What a fantastic job you did today, bringing in the flag and leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. That is a very important thing to do to start our meeting. It's very important that we recognize our country every time we start a government meeting. So, thank you, girls. Where are the troop leaders? Are there troop leaders? Come on down.[669.88][669.88](APPLAUSE) We know that it takes a lot, a lot of commitment and dedication to be a troop leader and we really appreciate what you're doing to help develop the youth in our city. So what we'll do is the girls will go along and say their name. You're going to tell us your first name, your age, and what school you go to, okay? And we're going to start at this end today.
My name is Lydia. I am eight and I go to George White.
My name is Delia. I am eight. I'm in third grade and I go to George White Elementary School.
My name is Nada. I am eight and I go to Malcolm Elementary.
My name is Jordan. I go to George White Elementary School and I'm in third grade and I'm eight.
My name is Sandy and I go to Malcolm Elementary School and I'm eight.
My name is Naya and I go to George White Elementary School. My age is nine and my grade, my grade is second, first, second grade, third grade.
My name is Sarah. I go to Capo Valley Christian School. I'm eight and I go in third, I mean, I'm in third grade.
My name is Adriana. I am eight years old and I go to Malcolm Elementary.
My name is Anaya and I'm eight and I go to Morton. And I'm in third grade.
My name is Ashley and I go to George White Elementary School and I'm in third grade.
My name is Amara and I go to Stratford and I am nine.
My name is Lydia. I am eight. I go to third grade and I go to George White Elementary.
My name is Juliana and I go to Johnus Malcolm Elementary School and I'm eight years old.
I am going to college, but I'm Barb.
I am Victoria and, um, yeah, no age or grade.[825.34][825.34](LAUGHTER)
Well, thank you very much. We're going to get some pictures. So you stay right there. And I also have something for our troop leaders. Where are they? They're, they're hiding back here. Just in appreciation of your dedication to the community and to excellence in service, thank you so much. This is the mayor's challenge coin. So thank you for what you do for our community. You know, I have no doubt that in years to come, we're going to see some of these young ladies sitting up there on the dais. So thank you for what you're doing. So let's get some pictures. The parent paparazzi, if you want to come on down. Okay, and we have a presentation tonight for World Alzheimer's Awareness Month. Patty Muton, will you please come down to accept this proclamation? Okay, on behalf of the Laguna Niguel City Council, I'll present this to you. And if you'd like to stand here in the center so everyone can see it, and then I will let everyone know what that says. Okay, September 2018 is World Alzheimer's Awareness Month. Whereas the nation, state of California, and city of Laguna Niguel observe World Alzheimer's Awareness Month during the month of September. And whereas Alzheimer's disease is a progressive neurodegenerative brain disorder, tragically robs individuals of their moments and leads to progressive mental and physical impairments. And whereas more than eighty-four thousand residents in Orange County and over five million Americans are currently living with Alzheimer's disease. And whereas Alzheimer's disease is the third-leading cause of death in Orange County and the sixth-leading cause in the nation. And whereas each family, each year, family caregivers provide 1,139 hours of care per individual with Alzheimer's. And working family caregivers cost California businesses 1.4 billion dollars in lost productivity annually. And whereas the mission of the Alzheimer's Association of Orange County is to provide hands-on care and support, information, referrals, education, and resources for families in Orange County and surrounding areas who experience memory loss, Alzheimer's, and other dementias, while advancing critical research for a cure. Now therefore I, Mayor Elaine Janeway, on behalf of the Laguna Niguel City Council, do hereby declare the month of September 2018 as World Alzheimer's Awareness Month in the city of Laguna Niguel. So Patty, thank you for all that you do, for the advocacy that you do throughout our county is incredible. I know you also go to Washington DC to advocate for Alzheimer's and we really appreciate your bringing awareness to this tragic disease. Thank you. Thank you.[1096.58][1096.58](APPLAUSE) Okay, and that is it for tonight's presentation, so we can go back up to the dais. Okay, now it's the public communications portion of the meeting. Any person wishing to address the city council will need to complete and present a gold-colored request-to-speak form to the city clerk. Those forms are available on the counter that's located near the door to the council chambers. Please be aware that there's a time limit of three minutes for each person to speak. To allow equal time for all speakers, minutes may not be given to another speaker. You may have another person read your written statement. City Clerk Gomez, are there any additional request-to-speak forms aside from what I have here?
No, Mayor, there are no others.
Okay, thank you. Okay, first, we have Melinda Galler. Please state your name and address into the microphone.
Okay, I am Melinda Galler with the Laguna Niguel Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here tonight, Mayor Janeway, city council members and staff, to invite everybody to the annual mayor's party, which this year is Mayor Janeway's Big Seventy Disco Inferno. So we're hoping everybody can come. It's at El Niguel Country Club, September 22nd, six to nine, and it's forty-five dollars a person. And we're going to have a buffet. So dust off your bell bottoms and I hope to see you all there. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Melinda. That'll be a lot of fun that evening. So, and that is a fundraiser for the Chamber of Commerce for the educational programs that they provide to our small businesses. Next, we have Sam June.
Hi, everyone. Sam June, 24762 El Manzano in Laguna Niguel. Mayor Janeway, Mayor Pro Tem Jennings, ladies and gentlemen of the city council and staff, thank you so much for your time. I have been a resident of Laguna Niguel for a little over thirty years, and I have owned and lived in my home with my family for about twenty-four years. I am one of the unlucky people whose home falls under the SD and G and E coverage area. It's my understanding that the people who are lucky enough to have Southern California Edison as a provider are being billed at about a third of what we are essentially getting the same service, which is electricity. Since I do not have a choice of providers, I would like to put in solar. And I would like you to reconsider allowing the HERO slash PACE program in Laguna Niguel. I was told two years ago through an email from the city manager that the city decided not to allow the program. The city didn't like the restrictions and the potential equity issues. Since then, SD and G and E has charged me an average of four-hundred-and-twelve dollars per month for electricity. Had I been allowed to make my own decision and bought a solar system using the PACE program, even with the highest interest rate on a ten-year loan, I would have been paying about three-hundred dollars per month for my system and I'd be two years into owning it right now. My equity position in my home would have changed nominally. I understand the loans and its restrictions, and if I suddenly chose to sell my home, I would have to pay the loan off. These restrictions and issues mentioned in the city manager's email should be my choice, not the choice of the city council. Most of our neighboring cities allow this program, so I'd ask that you allow us to be adults and make our own decision regarding PACE. By the way, my bill for August for SDG and E was over eight-hundred dollars. My average for the 2018 year is four-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars per month. Since I can't change providers, I would ask that you add choices for me and the fellow residents of Laguna Niguel by revisiting the issues around approving PACE as a choice to combat SDG and E's monopoly over our electrical use. Thank you for your time, your consideration, and hopefully your reversal regarding the ability of the residents of Laguna Niguel to use this program.
Thank you, Mr. June. Our next speaker is Dwayne Cave.
Good evening, Mayor Janeway, city council staff. My name is Dwayne Cave and I'm the External Relations Manager for San Diego Gas and Electric. As you're aware, SDG and E serves over fifty percent of the residents here in Laguna Niguel. SDG and E is a public utility and it's regulated by the PUC. And thus, we have some regulations that, that sometimes make it very difficult for our, our customers. I'm here tonight due to the large number of high bill complaints that, that we have seen at SDG and E and US council members and some of our, our state local, state-elected officials have seen. I wanted to talk to you about that. We're sorry that they're involving you in this and that in the future, as you all know, we'd like you to, please forward the complaints to SDG and E directly so we can take care of it, or to the Public Utilities Commission so they can hear from our customers. And it is important that our, that the PUC hears from our customers at this time. So I'm here tonight to talk about, you know, why, why are our rates so high? And there are a number of reasons why the, the rates are so high. First of all, from June 1st to August 24th, it was the hottest six-week time period that we've had in our history in Southern California. And due to that, we all know everyone has had their, their air conditionings on and it's run up their electric bills. But they did that in Edison too, and their bills aren't as high as, as ours. June 1st started a time period where SDG and E went from winter rates to summer rates, and those rates are higher. The reason that they're higher, it's, it's, what the PUC wants to send is a price signal to our customers to conserve at times. And when it's extremely hot for day after day after day, that's extremely hard to do if you're a customer. I know we all have our air conditioners on if we can. The other thing that we have is our tiered system. We have three tiers and the third tier is the high-usage charge. And it's not something that, that SDG and E asked for to have on our bills, but it's something that was mandated by the PUC. Edison has a high-usage charge, as does PG and E. SDG and E's is, is higher though than the, than the others. At one time though, I have to let you know, SDG and E was the low-price leader out of the investor-owned utilities. And that was some time ago. But costs have been driving up. So what's, what's driving those costs up? A lot of it is, is regulatory requirements. As you may have read in the paper, the, the legislature was looking to mandate hundred percent renewables by the year twenty, 2045.
Yeah, five seconds. Please continue.
And with that, we see a lot of, a lot of issues. Mayor, can I go on just a few minutes more than the three minutes? Thank you. Because I'd like to respond and have everything here. So we have a forty-five percent renewable goal by 2045. What this has caused SDG and E to do is invest a lot of money into battery storage and other renewable generation and improve our, our infrastructure so that we can handle that. Today, we're at forty-five percent renewable. And we're the highest of all public utilities. That drives the, the commodity charge up on our bill higher than what you see for the other utilities. And, and another thing that we're investing in is, is reliability projects to make sure that our lights stay on. Even when the prices are high, our customers' number-one concern is that when they turn on the lights, when they turn on the air conditioner, that it actually works. We're spending money on, on reliability projects. One of the big problems that we have with our rate base though, is that when we spread our costs out and determine who's going to pay for the cost of all of this, it's either industrial customers or it's small business and residential. In Edison, they have a huge industrial base that they can shift a lot of their costs to. SDG and E is a smaller utility with a very small industrial base. So where do those costs get shifted to? They get shifted to the industrial base. Another thing's part of the regulatory requirements is that our customers are investing in solar. They are doing that. As a matter of fact, ten percent of our customers at SDG and E have rooftop solar. And that's good for them. It's going to help, help protect them from some of the price spikes. But unfortunately, if you don't have solar, there's a cost shift that goes to you. And this year, we're spending about four-hundred million dollars on a cost, cost shift from solar customers that they aren't paying to, to the non-solar customers. And some of the people that are not solar, it's because they live in townhomes, they're renters, or there's other reasons why they, they can't install solar themselves. So what can you do? One thing we want you to know is that we're predicting that we've had the highest, highest temperatures in the last six weeks. September's supposed to be warm again. So what we've done is we mailed out to all of our customers, five things that you need to know, and the council has this on, on their, on their dais right now. So it's some of the tips that we're giving to our customers to help, help them out at this time. So one thing we have is we have built payment programs, level pay plans and others that they can help spread out some of the pain that they have during the high summer months. On my account, if you sign in, you can get spending and, and tier alerts. So if you're starting to use a lot of electricity, you can get, you can get a, a text or an email to let you know where you are so you can make an informed decision on what you do. And... And you can make your own decisions on what you run. If you run an air conditioner, the typical cost is one to two dollars an hour. If you have fans going, those are about four cents an hour. So what we ask people to do is please use the fans as much as they can. And if you're using the air conditioner, one thing that's important is that if you keep your house cool during the day at maybe a higher temperature than you want, but keep the air conditioner on when you get home and you want it to be a little bit cooler, the air conditioner doesn't have to work as long and hard when you come home at night, and that can help you actually keep your bills down. So it's not turning it off during the day, but it's actually running it during the day. And the other option you have is time of use. You may be able to save money if you go to time of use instead of on the tiered session. If you go to time of use, there is no high-usage charge, the HUC, so you can save on that. And SDG and E has a guarantee for the first year that they'll figure out your bill from time of use. And for the tiered system, if you go to time of use and your bill would have been lower during the tiered system, you get that refunded after the year. So that's some of the things we have here. I'm very sorry that the bills are so high, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Well, thank you for bringing this information to us today. And hopefully our residents have heard it. Those who are watching on TV have heard it. And we urge our residents to reach out to SDG and E for some more information and have your questions answered.
Perfect. I'll leave some of the flyers in the back of the room.
Okay, thank you. Hey, City Clerk Gomez, any more requests to speak forms?
No, Mayor, that was the last one.
Okay, public communications is now closed. We will now move to our consent calendar, items one through eight. And I'd like to note that on item eight, which is the procedure for removal of members of the Laguna Niguel Military Support Committee, on page two of the resolution, duplicated text has been removed. And on page three, the resolution number was corrected. So we'll be voting on the current version that is highlighted in the red folders. Are there any items that need to be pulled for comments or discussion? Seeing none, pardon me?
I'll pull item number eight.
Councilman Minigar or Mayor Pro Tem?
None.
Okay.
I've moved the balance.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Jennings has moved approval of the balance of the consent calendar. It was seconded by Councilmember Davies. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Carries? Okay, item number eight.
You want me to lead on that?
Yeah, or... Do you have a question or a discussion?
I have more of a discussion on the item.
Okay.
This item is for a procedure to remove members of the Military Support Committee. I think it's an interesting discussion item, but I think it's one particular committee. And I would suggest to the council that we review it in terms of all the committees. Perhaps this one has co-chairs, but I think if you're doing something like this, it should be equitable across the board and pertaining to all the committees. So I'm not gonna be supporting this particular measure as it's written, but I would suggest it goes back and looks at all the committees. So that's my just suggestion.
Councilmember Davies?
Thank you. I completely understand your point there. And we haven't really gone through other commissions, have we? I know the difference here is that there are co-chairs compared to the other committees. But we haven't, have we gone through other procedures for the other committees or is something that we should do across the board, whether you have a co-chair or not?
I have a couple of comments on that, Councilmember. There's an existing provision in the municipal code that addresses removal from committees generally. That's cited in the staff report. We haven't specifically looked at any other committees or commissions other than the Military Support Committee. It seems to me that one is sort of unique because of the method of appointment and of the direct contact between the co-chairs and the members of the committee. We certainly could look at the other commissions, committees. I'm not quite sure how we would do that, but some sort of process or procedures could be looked at.
Well, I would very much like to see the process and procedures to be fair and equitable across all of them. And to have one particular committee kind of pointed out is probably not the best way, I think, in terms of management. So we'd like to see us have a little bit better consistency across all our committees and look at it in a little bit more depth.
The difference with this committee, and why it's this one in particular versus our other committees, is that all of the other city commissions and committees are appointed by the city council as a whole. The Military Support Committee, those members are appointed by the two co-chairs. So the removal process should be the same as the appointment process. So because in the resolution, when it was drafted to make that change in the selection, there was no mention of the removal process, so it defaults to the city code for all of the other committees. And this committee is, again, it's not appointed by the entire city council, so you would not really need a removal by the entire city council as a body. And this committee operates differently. All of the other committees are advisory bodies to the city council. The Military Support Committee is a working committee that the members of that committee are working on activities and events. And they generally pretty much replicate them year after year. And the issue has been whether or not there have been instances when some of the activities or actions have put the city in a position of liability. And at this point, the co-chairs have no option.
I'm very familiar with the Military Support Committee. As you may or may not be aware of, I was the one who brought forth, along with Robert Ming, the Military Support Committee, and our very first action, and I commend our entire city councils and staff, was to adopt the USS McCluskey. So I've been there from the beginning, and I understand the committee and the workings of the committee and how hard the members work. So that's why I really want to make sure that there's a time and a place. We understand that some people work really, really hard. And this is a committee where people do work really, really hard. It's a working committee. But correction, the Planning Commission is stand aside alone. Their decision is vital and must appeal. But I do think because you might want to change the timelines of appointing committee members or that, because when their term is up, then you don't reappoint them. So I just think there's a way to do it in a way. These are wonderful, wonderful people. And they're trying, they're working really, really hard. So that's my comment on the committee. And I'm not gonna support this, but somebody else may.
Councilmember Davies?
Thank you. Again, I'm a co-chair on that, on the committee as well. And I don't see any harm where if we did table this, we could look at all the commissions as a whole. And obviously, we could do a vote, but this would be obviously a little bit different than the other ones. But I think I'm for, you know, stepping back. Let's get this all done at one time. That way, we know that all the commissions are up and running the way they should be, and our process is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, in my opinion, I think in the court of public opinion, public perception would be very critical. And I tend to a hundred percent agree with my colleague, Councilwoman Linda Lindholm, that with all due respect to the two co-chairs, I think it has to come back to the city council that all of us would make a determination if one individual is not suitable for the committee. And furthermore, you mentioned the issue of liability. I mean, Planning Commission in every city in America is the most dynamic, is the most, if you want to call it, responsible organization that they have to make all land use decisions that are very pivotal, critical to every aspect of every city. So they're not making military decisions. They're not making any decisions that would be harming the city for that matter. So in my opinion, for the two co-chairs to make that determination, I would not be supportive of that. Thank you.
Okay, and just for clarification, the issues of liability we're talking about are not military decisions. They are such as leasing vehicles for city activities when you have no authority to lease a vehicle, use of gift cards and cash. So that's where our concern is, putting the city in certain positions. So yes, we know they're not making military decisions. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, only to comment that I'm interested in that. And if there is malfeasance going on, I certainly think we need to exercise everything at our disposal to take care of that. This is a little bit different, I guess. I don't know, I'm understanding from the municipal code now that if we want to remove somebody from the committee, they would have to agendize on the city council and come that direction, correct? Correct. But that malfeasance, to the extent that that was the thing to remove it, that may actually have a separate process and get reported and that type of thing. So I don't know. I saw this, and I had a lot of questions. They were all answered before I sat on the dais, so it's not without questions. I have quite a few questions on it. But I think as I've heard the comments today, I'd like to take another look at this. I'd like to think about it a little bit further. It is completely different than all of the other commissions. And I've served on or been liaison to many of them. So this one's unique, and I want to make sure that we get it right. And if this is the right way to go, then that's fine. I was initially concerned that we have two co-chairs, and they could, you know, I would assume that you all might agree this time, but there could be an occasion where you don't agree. And then you end up with a split vote of only two people in a Brown Act meeting, which really doesn't, that doesn't follow any of our other processes as well. So I was pretty uncomfortable with that. So my thought would be, let's take one more shot at this, take a look at it. And if there is a, I don't know if it's Plan B or C, but something that does involve full vote of the full council, it may well be that we may need to turn that into a Brown Act meeting of the council so that we could vote on that. And I think procedurally, it's probably a better due process. And certainly, if the, if, as your example, I'm not saying that's happening, but if it is happening, if there's malfeasance underlying this, and I would rather have us involved than not involved, as it turns out. And that may actually give the two co-chairs, whoever they are, at the time, more cover on that, too. So from a protective standpoint, I'd feel more comfortable with, as unpleasant as that is, because it could be unpleasant, having to air all that grievances in a public body like this. But that, as it turns out, is the point of the Brown Act. So maybe we should give some deference to that and rethink this one.
Okay, so my understanding is the consensus of the council to refer this back to staff to take a comprehensive look at all of our committees and to see how this issue should be addressed with not only the Military Support Committee, but all of the city commissions and committees. Any further direction of staff?
No.
Okay. All right. Okay, moving on to city manager, item number one.
So Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, I have a very brief presentation, but this item is basically a receive and file. I wanted to update you on some work that was recently done by the Homeless Task Force. As you can remember, in April 2017, actually, it's 2018. I wasn't here in April 2017. So in April 2018, I formed the Homeless Task Force to help advise me on strategy to deal with the homeless community in our city and how we could pool our resources and what would be some of the best strategies to go about providing services for them. So basically, it was to help reduce and eliminate the homeless in our community and then also coordinate regionally by pooling our resources to achieve this goal. So this group has been meeting, and of course, Councilmember Lindholm and Mayor Janeway. You volunteered to sit on this task force as well, so I thank you so much for your time on that task force. And I'd also like to thank the other individuals that have given a lot of time. What we did is we put together nonprofit organizations and faith-based organizations, and they have been committing a lot of time to sitting and serving on this task force. So I want to quickly just thank these groups because they've been an integral part of it, and they have helped make what I'm gonna present to you a little bit later. They're the architects behind this. And so we have Barbara Kimmler of Hands of Grace, Beth Garlock of the Laguna Niguel Stake Relief Society, of the Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, Pastor Bill Snyder from the Mission Lutheran Church, Monsignor John Urel of Saint Timothy's Catholic Church, Pastor Jim, and I'm not probably gonna say this last name correctly, Zeller of Laguna Niguel Presbyterian Church, Laura Fisher and Rene Stevenson of South County Outreach, Mary Purdue of the Family Assistance Ministries, and Takashi Awamoto of Grace Church. And then, of course, we've had participation from our own Chief of Police Services, Matt McDaniel, and our Homeless Liaison Officer, Mark Dent, and our Deputy City Manager, Debbie Bell. So early on, when we got together, it was quite amazing. What we learned from one another is already in our community, there is a lot of compassion and a lot of nonprofits and faith-based groups. They're doing incredible things out there that we probably, we weren't aware of. And in the room, we quickly discovered that each other was not aware of what the other person next to them was doing. So the concept of coming up with a comprehensive community resource guide came about. And so everybody provided their input. And what we have created is a trifold brochure. I'm not gonna read it in detail. It is available on our website. But what it does is it provides in one place all the services that already exist in our community. And I think so much of the time, we put an emphasis on the services that are offered by government entities when the majority of the services out there are those faith-based groups and the nonprofits. So we'll just flip through this, but you can see in our guide, it's called Community Resources: Homeless Preventative Services. It has a lot more than just shelters and emergency shelters. It has included in it housing opportunities, rental assistance, places where you can get assistance for utility payments if you're short on a utility bill, a number of food pantries that we actually have operating either within our city or in a very close proximity. It has a lot of the programs that we do for our seniors in our community, whether that is Meals on Wheels or other lunch programs that we provide. It also goes into physical and mental health. So the number of mental health providers and care agencies that we have within a very close proximity, that's all available for individuals to access. So what we're doing with this resource guide is we not only have it on our website, but we were offering for any of the churches and any of the nonprofits, if they wanted to have an inventory of them, we would print them for them and get them to them, and then they would be able to distribute them to whether it's their volunteers or their congregate members so that everybody out there is equipped with a comprehensive list of resources. It's also a tool that our sheriffs, our deputies are going to be used as they encounter. But more importantly, it can be used by our residents as well. It's something that they can access online. And if they see a homeless person and they want to help provide them direction to where there are services available, it could be a useful guide as well. So I'm happy to take any questions on it, but it is out there, distributed, and on the website at this time.
Okay, thank you, City Manager Ridge. I know that this has been, I mean, this is incredible that we, we know we've been doing the work in the community, but then to see it all brought together on paper, it really shows the residents what we've been talking about and how we have been addressing this issue for many years. Have we sent out a news blast to let our residents know that this is available on the website? Because I know that they have been asking for something like this for a while to have put the information in their hands.
I posted it today on the news carousel, but I didn't actually send the news flash out. I'm gonna send it in the morning because I wanted you to be able to see it tonight, and then we can follow up in the morning with the actual email message going out to everybody.
Great, thank you. Any questions, comments?
It was my pleasure to serve with our mayor on this and our city manager. I, too, want to thank all the people who participated. We had so many of the church leaders give up their time and energy. We had so many from the resources give up their time and actually teach us what was going on and contribute to the writing. And I think Sergeant Sanders, didn't you help review it? Thank you. And Debbie Bell also helped put it together. So a lot of people put it together. Please use it. Look at the front. The very first thing you should know is if you need help of any kind, dial 211. That's kind of the clearinghouse of everything. So if you have just a general question and you want help, dial 211. So remember that, that's on the front page. Please, we can print them for you. Debbie has been so kind as to make them available to all the charities and the churches. And hopefully, we'll have them on our counters, and our police will have them. So we can do something. We can be of help. We can try and help people who might be homeless or might become homeless. So I thank the entire city council for their work on this and their effort, and of course, our city manager.
There's still more work to be done. So this group will continue meeting. One of the areas that I'm looking for direction now is we anticipate that we're gonna receive some funding in the next year via SB2 that the city will receive and will be able to allocate it to homeless services. So I'm hoping that this group can help guide me on what's the biggest bang for our buck. Where should we be dedicating those resources? where should we be dedicating those resources to. So thank you.
Again, thank you to everyone who participated in this, and it's great information. And as we always say to our residents, if you see something, say something here. If you see something here, you have the resources, you can provide the information so people can get the assistance that they need. So can I have a motion to receive and file the update on the task force on homelessness?
Go move.
Second? Okay, moved by Councilmember Lindholm, seconded by Councilmember Davies. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, stain, carries. Okay, so that includes our discussion items, so we'll move on to other business and council reports. We had an Economic Development Ad Hoc Committee meeting. Mayor Protem, would you like to give the report for that?
I'm happy to do so. We, we had yet again another very productive economic development meeting. I, I like the direction these are heading. We have, I think it's semi-public, at least five new restaurants that are going in, and they're opening, they're in process right now, and the city's trying to do everything we can to help them through that process. I've heard loud and clear, as of all my colleagues, that if we could wave a magic wand and do something as city council members, probably slowing people down would be the first one, the second one would be opening more restaurants. And of course, the city doesn't open restaurants, we just help people do that. But through the economic development, we are actively helping our community put this out, and these five new restaurants, I'm impressed with, I think the city will love them, they're very befitting, and you'll want to go to those. And beyond that, there's a, a, a larger discussion of uses, which are, are not just entities filling spots, but trying to create experiences around what we're bringing into the city, and what the city can do strategically to try to create experiences, and through that, we're trying to attract the right, the right type. So we had some very good meetings with the people at the Laguna Design Center as an example, and trying to come up with some creative uses on that. And that will be folding into things we're doing in the upcoming months. So I was very, I was very pleased with it, and I continue to look forward to that.
And we are continuing to work with the property managers and look forward to having another session with some dialogue with them. And that, that's very productive, and also, I think it's, it pleasantly surprises them that the city wants to engage. So that is it for committee, and now we're on to council reports. Who would like to start? Member Lindholm?
Thank you. Just very briefly, I've already made comments for this evening, but I would encourage the Economic Development Committee, because we really do need some restaurants here in town. I had, I drove to Orange, I guess, to get Lucille's Barbecue or something. I, I would really like to stay here in Laguna Niguel, and so, and whatever you can do in that respect, let them know that they're welcome, we do need restaurants here in Laguna Niguel. And I've already made comments tonight.
Councilmember Davies?
Thank you. In that note, I saw that we do have a new Waffle House in the Ralph Shopping Center off Ranch Niguel. I will be there tomorrow, I just happened to drive past it, so. Looks delicious, and I see the comments are really good online as well. So that's a great start, when you can have positive comments that first week, because it's not always, sometimes it's a hard opening, no matter what you do. Last Friday, with OCTA, we had a forum for the fifth district mayors, and our mayor was there, and we went over some of the projects coming up, the next coming years. I'm very excited, because we had the OC Flex program. And as you know, through ridership, definitely has been down over the last couple of years, and you can't go across the board, you can't do the same mobility solutions north, central, and south. We just don't have the ridership, so what do we do when we need to fill that spot? And OC Flex is a pilot program, we're planning on starting end of September, but it'll be more of a shuttle, and if you kind of know what the access bus looks like, it's a little bit smaller, it will be ADA, will hold about seven people, but it's going to be more like a Uber, Lyft type, where you'll have an app, we will pick you up, and we've got, and we'll show you, because we'll have a presentation, but the map is basically Lisa Veho, Mission Veho, and Laguna Niguel, and it kind of looks like a squirrel. So it's just kind of an area over there, but it's hitting the routes that we had to reduce, like Route 85 and so. But you can basically call, and it'll pick you up. The goal is to hopefully have a 15-minute wait time and get to your destination. It's a share ride, $5 for the whole day, or for 50, use the app. And one of the good things about this is that kids can use it, because parents are always trying to get the kids, sometimes they have to, and you can't use Uber or Lyft if you're under a certain age. So we will be having the council have an opportunity to do the ride, so you'll see the route. That'll be coming up hopefully in about a month, but we're very excited, because we're moving forward, coming up with different solutions, thinking out of the box, how do we go ahead and deal with mobility that's needed, you know, at a decent cost. So I'll keep you updated on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Minigar?
Besides the routine meetings, as an alum of the Laguna Niguel Citizen Academy, classes of 12 and 17, I attended the Citizens Academy, the alumni barbecue at the city halls, and Chief McDaniel and Sergeant Songar, as always, did a superb job, and it was a pleasure and honor for me to be there and to meet and greet all the alumni. This city is very special because of the volunteers and because of the citizens that want to participate and learn about the law enforcement, and how much Orange County Sheriff Department and our police services are doing for this great city. So with that, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Great, thank you very much, Mayor. We have a lot of youth and adult sports teams which have started their fall seasons. I wanted to give a special shout out to AYSO. The mayor and I were able to go to their opening day ceremony for their 45th anniversary here in Laguna Niguel, which is pretty fantastic. So I want to say thank you to them and good job. We were also joined with, by Senator Bates at that, and some of the other local folks, and had a very nice turnout. Also want to remind everyone, it is a, we're in the back-to-school zone now, I think it's official that after Labor Day, all the schools have started back. Just an extra reminder to slow down, be safe, give extra attention to the school crosswalks. I'm hearing very troubling things in posts about people encroaching on, on, on crosswalks. I'd like to talk about that a little bit more in future meetings, but for now, just have a be mindful and slow down. It is true that if a bus has a sign out and it's flashing, you have to stop, and it doesn't matter which direction you're headed. So please pay attention to that. It ought to go without saying, but for some reason, we, we apparently need it. And I also have the pleasure of serving on behalf of the, the city as the trustee for the Vector Control Board here in Orange County. They're the ones principally charged with keeping the mosquitoes at bay and doing what we can to stop the spread of disease. I had nothing but good news to report all year, because we had a very quiet year and it was going well. Unfortunately, the extremely hot and humid weather that we've had has almost tripled the instances of the mosquito population and the instances of West Nile. We've had 37 mosquito pools test positive for West Nile virus here in Orange County, zero in Laguna Niguel thus far, thankfully, but our friends to the north have it much worse than we do. And I'm sad to report that we do also have three residents who's also tested positive for West Nile, which is an extremely difficult thing to get through, and it's very taxing on the body and can be very dangerous. So our thoughts are with them. I wanted to let people know that this does not, and I'll emphasize, does not, mean that there is spraying going on. The spraying only occurs, it hasn't occurred in a long time, but if it did occur, it would require a vote of the entire trustee panel to do that. We would have to be summoned to our offices at the Vector Control Board and make that decision, and I would only do so after I reported it to you. So I want to make sure everyone knows that we are treating this, but they have ways of treating it that does not involve aerial spraying of any kind. So be mindful of that. With all the discussion of SDGNE and the presentation tonight, I am honored to be able to go down to their operations center this Friday. They invited people down, and I accepted that invitation, so I'll be taking a tour of their operations center. I think that's very important, I'd like to have a chance to talk with some of their folks and get to the bottom of more of what we heard tonight from Mr. Cave, and, and I appreciate the presentation, so thank you. And just one last note, I'd invite people, we've had a lot of discussion online and elsewhere, I'm sure my colleagues have been getting the questions as well regarding traffic safety and general safety around town. I wanted to invite everyone to the Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs meeting this Friday morning at 7:30, where our very own Chief Matt McDaniel will be giving a presentation on that very thing. I think it will be very informative, it is one of my favorite meetings of the month, and it is now one of my favorite speakers at the favorite meeting, so I think it's very good, and I would encourage everyone to come. So with that, thank you, and thank you very much, Mayor.
Just a couple of things to add or to expand on. On the fifth district mayor's meeting for the Orange County Transportation Authority that Councilmember Davies spoke of, our Director of Public Works, Jackie Scott, was there as well, and they talked about Flex and also many other improvement projects that are going on in the county. And the I-405 project, the widening there is going to be the largest road improvement project in the state of California, and that is going to take us until, I think, 2023. But we have some, you know, big changes coming here, but OCTA has really used foresight in this in preparing for our population growth. Went to the ribbon cutting of Stretch Labs, it's a new business in our city, attended that ribbon cutting, and they, I have to share with you, they had such high compliments for the city's new concierge level service. I know that our Orange, our Economic Development Committee has been working on that, we rolled that out a couple of months ago. City Manager Ridge made a presentation on that, we have roshures. It's when someone goes to our planning department, there's a one point of contact that walks them through the whole process, there's also concurrent permitting, but they said, because they are opening Stretch Labs nationwide, and they said this was the easiest city to get through, and they really liked working with us and just had some very high praise. So thank you, City Manager Ridge, for what you and your team are doing to make it easy for businesses to open their doors. Really excited about the restaurants that we have coming. We do have fantastic restaurants coming, Councilmember Lindholm. And, but I tell everybody, you, you want great restaurants, you need to go to the restaurants, you need to support the businesses. So we have several new ones opening soon, so please support them. Also, please be gentle during their opening. Sometimes, you know, it's not just making food and putting it on the menu, it's all the, getting all of the help trained and the servers and everything like that. So have a little patience when a restaurant does open, because we know that their wait staff does need some, some time to get used to the flow. But we're really excited about some of the ones we have coming, and look forward to having our Laguna Niguel residents supporting those restaurants so that they stay here. And that's all that I have for this evening, so we'll start with Chief McDaniel.
Thank you, Mayor. And as you know, and Councilwoman Davies have been working on the bullying prevention workshop that we're hosting this Thursday night. There's still room available, I would encourage any parent of a sixth grade to eighth grade child, that this is a very good program. It's not just for kids who, you know, may be getting bullied, or may be a bully themselves, but it's the kids that, what to do when they see that type of behavior and how to deal with that. So it's still open, we have plenty of room, they need to just make a reservation with us at Police Services, and we'll get them in that class. And again, that is this Thursday, September 6th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And I do want to thank Councilman Minigar for coming to the Citizens Academy barbecue, I appreciate that very much, and thank you for the kind words, Councilman or Mayor Protem Jennings, appreciate it. That's all I have.
Hey, Director Erlinson?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
City Attorney Dixon?
There's a little switch on top. Yes, it works.
Mayor and Council, I would like to take this opportunity to invite you all to the two fire stations, Station 5 that's behind us and Station 49, for the 9/11 memorial. It's going to take a place one week from today. It'll start at 8:45, right on the clock, that'll be the time that the first aircraft went into the first tower, and it'll be over approximately 15 minutes later at 9:05, excuse me, 9 o'clock. That's all I have.
Thank you. City Clerk Gomez?
No, Mayor, nothing for me.
Director Giglio?
Sorry. Thank you. This Friday is our Fall Flick, featuring a Grease sing-along over at Marina Hills Park. That's Friday, September 7th, 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., and it's free, and all participants are encouraged to wear 50s attire for the sing-along. The Junior Civic Workshops for 6th to 8th graders kicks off this Tuesday, September 11th, and will feature the mayor, city manager, and history of the city seal. And that is going to be at 6:30, offered the second Tuesday of each month, and registration is required at EllenTeens.org. And Parks and Recreation is on a mission to increase our Instagram following, we're aiming for 1,000 followers, so we encourage everyone to go to Instagram at Ellen Rec and follow us. We have a lot of information, a lot of updates. Which leads me to the last one, we have a lot of exciting demolition coverage for our community center and our staff offices. So you can go to CityofLagunaNiguel.org, there is on the homepage, city project updates, and then click on Capital Improvement Program, and then click on the photo of the new conceptual community center, and you can see some of that video live. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy City Manager Bell? Hey, Director Scott? City Manager Ridge?
Just a couple of items, Mayor. I was waiting for one of you to mention that we were rated in the top 50 in the country for being business-friendly, so that is something we are going to be promoting through our economic development efforts as well. And for an announcement, our Community Development Director, Roseberry, is going to be retiring from city service effective September 13th. And the only other item is, if the resident that spoke about the PACE program, which I'm not familiar with, I was not the city manager two years ago, if you could leave your number with our city clerk, I'll be sure to reach out to you. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Anything else before we conclude? Okay, so that concludes our regular city council meeting. We are now adjourned at 8:01 p.m. Thank you, and have a nice evening.